Then we're going to begin our Ojai Planning Commission meeting for May 6, 2015. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items appearing on tonight's agenda are requested to complete a speaker's card and file it with the secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards are available in the lobby. Speakers should state their name and address for the record and limit your comments to two, to three minutes or less. Comments must be directed to the commission, not the audience. While Planning Commission is in session, all intents are expected to maintain order and decorum and to obey the orders of the Chair. Rule call.
Merk? Oh, he's not here, so he's absent. Jagiello?
Here.
Zabilla?
Here.
Nolan?
Here.
Foster?
Here.
Nicklin?
Yes.
Lajowski?
Here.
Commissioner Lajowski, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public communications, this is the time for that, and it's a time we set aside during the Planning Commission meeting for members of the public to address the commission on items as previously mentioned of city business other than scheduled agendaized items. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission and will generally be referred to staff and/or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no action can be taken at this meeting. I do not have before me any speaker cards for general public communication, but I will open up the forum if anyone would like to come forward. Okay. Scott?
Good evening, Chair Foster and commissioners and staff. Just a quick comment. I'm the third of five generations to live here in Ojai, and I've worked here for quite a while now and attended quite a few Planning Commission meetings, and I just want you to know that I don't care whether you live inside or outside of the city limits, but I trust all of you to make your decisions ethically, honestly, and objectively based on the facts that you receive, and that I don't expect you to make a decision that agrees with mine all the time, but I have complete confidence in your capabilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eckler. Is there anybody else that would like to come forward and address the commission this time? I see no one coming forward, so we'll move into our consent items, the first of which is minutes of our regular meeting of the Planning Commission of April 1st, 2015. I'll need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we agree to the minutes from April 1st, 2015.
Foster?
Yes.
Jagiello?
Yes.
Lajowski?
Yes.
Nicklin?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Zabilla?
Yes.
And evidently, we have two minutes that need to be consent items here regarding minutes, and this is our regular meeting of Planning Commission from April 15th, which was actually our last one, so we did the first and the 15th.
I'd like to just make maybe one little note.
On the 15th?
Yes.
Okay.
On the, for the 821 West Ojai Avenue, the way it's written, I just want to clarify that we met separately with the property owner. It says commissioners Jagiello, Lajowski, Nicklin, and Nolan were contacted by the property owner and toured the site. So I just wanted to clarify.
I also had that down as a note, too. I had one other comment, and it's not that it really affects anything, but it actually had to do with a comment that I made, which would be on page four of six, and it says under Vice Chair Nolan, and you know, these were just comments we were making about the project, but it's, I, on it, I think they were taken out of context, and I just wanted to state that. But one of the comments that says that I made was, "The city encourages outdoor dining to be open to the public." I don't recall saying that, but I think I was alluding to the fact that it was great that they were having outdoor dining and that the public was going to get to use the space. So, minor thing, but I just felt like I should mention that. And then the other item was, it said, the applicant had mentioned that they may be doing a Phase 3 on the project, and my comment that is put down here is also incorrect, I believe, or out of context. It says, "In the future, maybe with Phase 3, add sidewalks and a bike lane at the front of the property facing Ojai Avenue." Well, in fact, the project already had a sidewalk on it, and I alluded to that in the future, because we were working on that Complete Streets workshop that week, we were talking about having sidewalks put in on Ojai Avenue, continuous ones, so that would be great, and also the possibility of a bike lane, but not that the applicant would have to add a bike lane. And once again, the applicant already had the sidewalk on the plan, so I think it was just generally out of context. Thank you.
So we'll need a motion with those adjustments.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we include, approve the minutes with the adjustments that I just made, and the one that Commissioner Lajowski and I alluded to, and that was as far as the site visitation.
I'll second that.
Foster?
Yes.
Jagiello?
Yes.
Lajowski?
Yes.
Nicklin?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Zabilla?
Yes.
Okay. Next is our disclosure of site visit and ex parte contacts. Commissioner Jagiello?
I've been to the site where the parking lot has been reconstructed and had no ex parte contact.
I've also visited 832 East Ojai Avenue and had no ex parte contact.
I visited the site and did not have any ex parte contact.
I've been to the site, and Mr. Becker did visit my office probably some four or five weeks ago just to discuss this project.
I've visited the site, but no ex parte contacts either.
I've had no contact with the applicants, but I did visit the exterior of the site today.
Thank you. Next is our municipal advisory council Planning Commission liaison report from our MAC meeting of April 20th, and I see Mr. White's here. Welcome.
Well, good evening. Yes, we did have a municipal, Terry Wright, and I am with the Ojai Valley Municipal Advisory Council, and we had a meeting on the 20th, and the highlight of the meeting, of course, was the report from the Ojai Planning Commission Liaison, which was not here tonight, but anyway. One other thing that we'd had on the agenda was discussions about improvements along Highway 33. We had two gentlemen from Los Angeles who represent Caltrans, and they were there to talk about either existing projects, current projects, or potential projects. We also had a Highway Patrol representative there to talk about issues along Highway 33, and we had quite a few people from the public there to give their inputs. Some of the things that Caltrans discussed, they did say that they are anticipating, or they are in works of putting in a manually activated crosswalk lights in Casita Springs because of issues that have, you know, with people trying to cross the road there. So that's one thing that's going on. They said that there were several other areas where they were looking at putting in new signage to improve safety along Highway 33. There were quite a few comments from the public asking for, well, can we have lower speed limits or higher speed limits? Can we reduce the number of lanes in Oakview to two lanes instead of four lanes? And there was considerable discussion on that. And basically, Caltrans said, please put in requests, and they will be analyzed and looked at, but beware, if you ask for slower speed limits, the potential is they could be higher speed limits depending on the situation. And basically, unless there's a lot of reports of accidents and things involved, they're not going to do a lot of changing to Highway 33. So there was discussion about several accidents in the Miramonde area, and again, they asked for somebody to write a report or a letter to them requesting some improvements be made in those areas. Highway Patrol indicated that they basically work hotspots, and so if they have reports from people saying there's particular issues going on in some areas, they will go and analyze the situation, but they only have a maximum of two people for the whole entire valley, so the chances of being in the right place at the right time are sort of limited. They did make a comment about the fact that there was a lot of trash being reported along Highway 33, and the Highway Patrol said, well, they can cite people, but they have to see them. They can't take somebody else's word for it. In particular, the dump trucks that are traveling on Highway 33, they feel there's a lot of trash that's being blown out of the dump trucks, and they will cite them. Again, they have to see them, so hopefully they will catch those guys doing that. Basically, the truck going down the road with no cover on the back and the trash blows out and ends up, of course, along the highway. There was discussion about streetlights being out, particularly down closer to Ventura on Highway 33, and that the Caltrans people would look into that. There was also discussion about a stoplight that was not functioning properly along 33 in the Oakview area, and they were going to check into that. And I think that's about it.
Any questions for Mr. Wright?
Have you, have you, sorry, got more members on the commission?
No, are you looking for a job?
No. This one keeps me busy enough.
Well, the last, at the last meeting, we only had three, and we are now going for five instead of seven. Originally, we had seven, and we're going for five, and according to our liaison with the, with the county, they said they had people that are being approached and would possibly be available to do this, so. As a matter of fact, I brought it up at the meeting, you know, we're still looking for people to volunteer, and I was told, well, we have people in the process right now. So hopefully, we will have a full committee by the next meeting. But you're welcome to put your name in if you want. Thank you.
That it? Thank you. Moving on to our public hearing items, our first item is a design review permit DRP 15-02 and tree permit 15-11 for the renovation of an existing commercial parking lot, including new paving, landscaping, and renovation of the existing trash enclosure in the drip line of a protected oak tree located at 832 East Ojai Avenue. Assessor's parcel number 022-0-152-310. The general planned land use designation of the site is general commercial, and the zoning classification is general commercial C1. A categorical exemption has been prepared pursuant to our California Environmental Quality Act. The property owner is the Loeb Family Trust, and our applicants are Jeff Becker of the Becker Group. Larry Graves is our architect with Alliance Design Group. Staff?
Good evening, commissioners. Tonight before you, as you stated, is the project at 832 East Ojai, and what they're coming before you tonight with is essentially approval to renovate the site. They were issued a director's exemption to redo some of the parking, and it kind of started becoming a little bit more, and when staff went out there, they realized that they needed to come back in for a full DRP, so that's what's before you tonight. As you've seen since you've all been out there, they have repaved the parking lot, and the trash enclosure has gone up. The trash enclosure is essentially a renovation of the existing trash enclosure that was there that was kind of falling down. If it was brand new, it would have been required to meet current setbacks, which would have been 15 feet from the rear because they do a butt residential, but because there was an existing nonconforming trash enclosure there, and they're just reconstructing that and actually making it smaller rather than making it bigger, it was permitted to stay in the same location it is, and it looks pretty nice, so we didn't really see any issues with not, with bringing that forward to you, to leave it as it is. The building itself is just being repaired. They did receive approval from the building department to install new windows and replace the aluminum ones that were there, do some general upgrades to the outside of the building with paint and re-stuccoing some of the areas. One tree is being removed, and if you were out there, you saw there's one tree quite close to the building, an ash tree, and they are taking that tree out because it is a little too close, and installing five new trees around the site. Also in the back, as you saw, there's new landscaping medians that come out and also around the boundaries of the property to soften that hardscape they have back there and provide a little more screening, and just generally landscape that parking lot back there. And then, as you can see on the plans, they'll be putting in some new DG walkways. Right now, when you go out there, there's no real paths that go to the two separate office buildings, so once they complete all the landscaping, there'll actually be separate paths to provide more direction to people that are coming to the site from both the front of the building and the back of the building. Other than that, I'm available for any questions, and I'm sure the applicant would love to explain more.
Questions for staff? Let's hear from our applicant. Oh, did you have a question?
I did, just a quick, quick question. So when we receive a submittal, are there requirements that there has to be consistency at, as far as like the sheet said and what have you?
Are you talking about internally consistent in the submittal? Yes, they're supposed to be internally consistent. Is there an error in them?
Well, yeah, for instance, a planning plan isn't full size, and it's missing a lot of information. I was just curious, when they come in to submit, if they're notified that it's supposed to be, you know, a certain standard or not.
We have general submittal guidelines that are available to the public that detail what they're all supposed to have on them. I think in this case, you know, there might be some information missing that you would normally see, primarily because we're, you know, a lot of the folks here in Ojai are still kind of getting used to coming in and doing these small renovations to commercial buildings through a DRP. I mean, obviously, the work was already, on this particular case, the work was already performed, and then, you know, we informed the gentleman, they needed to come in and do a DRP. So we're still kind of educating the public on what minor revisions to a commercial building actually do require a DRP. And so I think that you'll generally see them moving forward, getting, you'll be getting better submittals all the time as the public now starts to realize what needs to be done. We are, as you might be aware, also that there's a, there's a policy now for director's exemptions from DRP. A lot of things used to be director's exemptions, and those really never had much attached to them, and the line has kind of been drawn now with those, you know, that they're very minor. So most everything is elevating to a DRP, but I think we're kind of still in that transition period. So we should see better submittals going forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Becker?
Good evening, Chair Foster and commission members. Jeff Becker with the Becker Group, I represent the property owner, and I have my architect and my landscape designer, Larry Graves and Kathleen Lynch here. So we, my client bought the property. We initially started to kind of clean the property up, get rid of a problematic tenant that was in the property, and it sort of, over time, warped into more and more, given the condition of the property. So we've, we've tried to kind of summarize those improvements on the plans that we provided, but, you know, it may be our fault that maybe all the little bells and whistles aren't there. Most of the work has been completed. We did put in a new parking lot, which originally we were looking to just pave, and the more we got into it, the more it basically fell apart. So happy to answer any questions, and we're just hoping to kind of finish off the project and improve the curb appeal.
Questions for the applicant, then? I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is a...
I'm still a little gimpy on my left arm, so I'm having trouble opening my plant. Did you officially close it, or could you reopen?
No, no.
Thank you.
There's no problem.
So I, I'm sorry, that took me a minute there. I had a couple of questions on the planting plan. There isn't a legend included, and there's no, unless I missed it, any indication as to what's going on with the irrigation. I know usually at this point, you know, they're just asking conceptually what we're going to do, but there isn't any notation. So there's some areas where I'm not exactly sure what's going on. Is that information that we can get from you?
Certainly. I might defer to my landscape designer, Kathleen, for questions.
Okay, great.
I believe that with the landscape plan, there should have been a key. Is that, did you receive that?
Did we get that? I don't...
I didn't see it.
Okay, so...
That would probably help clarify some of the plant material that's on the plan.
Okay.
And I'm happy to give you my copy if that would help, but I did bring it in with the key, so.
Could, yeah, or could we circulate it and take a peek, or?
Why don't we circulate it for now, just to, you want to give the staff?
I was just going to say that, just to clarify how this goes, is, you know, the applicant submits a relatively few, small number of plans, and then they're requested to bring in more for all of you. That's kind of the way it's traditionally been in Ojai. We're trying to change that, too. And so I think the, the number of cassettes that were brought in for you did not have that attached. That's just the difference.
Okay. All right, well, while we're, while we're circulating that...
So then, the other question that I had was about the irrigation. You, normally, there's, you know, some, not that you had to have a full irrigation plan, but that we, we just kind of generally know what your intentions were.
The plan, the intention is to install a drip irrigation system, so we would be using the existing valves that are there that were providing the, what the existing landscape was, was basically a lawn in the front.
So conversion?
A conversion to a drip irrigation system for the front and for the back.
Okay. And like, are you adding a new controller, or is that already part of the thing there?
You know, there is a controller that's there that's of nice quality, so I believe that the plan is to reuse that existing controller.
I'm just asking because of, first of all, the drought.
Right, correct.
And it is part of our ordinance that, you know, smart controller or really water-wise irrigation systems are going in, so.
Right. And I think that once you, if you're familiar with plant material and notice that the plant material that I've selected is very drought tolerant plant material, so we have, you know, aloes and plant material that requires, you know, South African native grasses. So, you know, I'm very oriented towards our water condition here, yeah.
Good, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Well, this is a public meeting, so I'm going to open it, the forum up for a public comment. If anyone would like to come forward, I don't have any cards in front of me specifically for this item, but you're more than welcome to speak on the matter if there's anybody out there in the public wishing to do so. So nobody's coming forward, so we will close the public comment portion of our meeting and open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners.
Do you want me to start?
Please.
I think the landscape plan is, the plant selection is nice, it's a good drought tolerant selection. I did notice today the olive trees were looking a little dried out, so I presume the irrigation has been sorted out.
I'm not sure where the landscape contractor who's installing the project, where, because the project was, I believe, interrupted. Is that correct? When it was called to our attention that we needed to submit a review, so.
It has since been connected. You'll have to come forward.
The olive trees were planted, and unfortunately, they were interrupted, so we've been hand watering, but I actually had them hook up the irrigation system about two weeks ago because I was concerned about the...
They had been getting water, but they looked like they were stressed out a little bit.
Yeah, they definitely are.
Yeah, thank you.
No problem, thank you.
But, you know, other than, you know, that, the landscape plan, it's a nice drought tolerant list. I think the layout of the parking was nice, the planters were nice. So, yeah, that's my comments. Thanks.
One just comment about the planters. I noticed in our packet, this is on page three of four, under the landscape plan, it says, "The landscape planners are five feet wide as opposed to six feet wide in order to limit impacts to the existing parking lot. Reduction width is permitted with approval from the director, in this case, the Planning Commission." So I guess that's something we, you know, we can improve or not, or discuss, but I just wanted to point that out.
Well, what is that even, I mean, I mean, what are we even talking about? What is the reduction width giving them? I'm not really...
So I think originally, the parking lot was just asphalt. There weren't these landscape planners in there, and so they've cut them in when they took out all the asphalt and curbed them, and in order to, you know, in order to take an existing parking lot and provide still the net amount of parking spaces that you need and still provide the landscape planners, that's the concession, is that they be five feet, not six feet. Am I, is that correct? That's my understanding at least. So that's really all that condition is saying, is it's acknowledging, you know, they pulled the asphalt away from that existing oak, and, so it's kind of just making our code fit with what's already in an existing layout situation.
Thanks. Yeah, I think they look, it looks good. I mean, when I look back there, it looks good. The whole project looks good. Don't have much to say about it.
Thank you.
Much to say about it, it looks good. It's a well-done project.
I think it's one of those buildings that used to fade into the background, and all of a sudden, sort of pops out, and less is more, and it's really pretty. Thank you.
Yeah, I had to ask myself what was there before because it looked that good, you know, just, you can tell there's, there was some good forethought that went into the planning of it, and just the cosmetic rehab and the great stucco plastering job and the layout, all in all, really works there. And now I think it also provides continuity, it's, there's beginning to be a connection with the recent, you know, cosmetic redo of the building next door. So it's, that end is slowly but surely coming together, so thank you for that. I think that's, that's good. As far as the landscape, I'm going to leave that up to our experts to discuss that, but...
I'm good with that.
Okay. All right, so if that be the case, we're probably looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt PC Resolution Number 15-... is there a number on that, Amber?
11.
11. So 15-11, approving the design review permit DRP 15-05 and tree permit T 15-11, subject to the findings and conditions of approval.
I'll second that.
Rule call.
Foster?
Yes.
Jagiello?
Yes.
Lajowski?
Aye.
Nicklin?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Zabilla?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is a discussion item, and it is surrounding the topic of our, this Planning Commission's pre-meetings. So I think probably the best way to enter into this discussion is have staff introduce to us the thought behind it. I'm just segueing into the next discussion item, yeah.
Okay, so as you all know, because most of you were there at the city council meeting last Tuesday, where they discussed the issue about the pre-meetings and just the protocols, and so staff was asked to put this on the agenda just to provide an agendized item where you could speak to either, you know, options, or obviously, you have a joint meeting coming up with the city council in May, and so that's one of the items that's been agendized for that joint meeting is to discuss this, and so this provides you an opportunity to either discuss, you know, the feelings, the options, you know, what you want to indicate to the council as far as, you know, the advantages. I think, so it was deliberately placed as a generic item in there so you could go with any direction that you wanted with it, but basically to provide an opportunity, an agendized item, where you could discuss which, what you really, as a consensus, as the commission, want to tell the, to tell the city council when you meet with them and it's brought up again.
Great.
Okay.
Okay. Please.
So I did attend the city council meeting, but I didn't realize that they were going to move it up in the agenda, so they had already started the discussion before I got there, and this, so this may have been covered, and I have not watched the city council meeting yet, so if it was, you know, you can let me know. But I was just very curious how it came about that we have the lunch and breakfast meetings. So from what I've heard, it's been going on for about 20 years. What's the history? Who came up with the idea? Who approved it? Of course, it's been in the budget, you know, we saw the note from our city manager that's budgeted every... budgeted every year. So, do you have that information?
How the pre-meetings came about? No. I think that I just know the same thing that everyone discussed, that, you know, when I started here, I was told, you know, it's part of my obligations to do a breakfast and lunch meeting, a breakfast with three, and a lunch meeting with three, and that this is what it's used for, points of clarification on the, on the agenda, or to ask questions about procedure, or general questions that you need answered, on any procedure that's going on. So, I don't know the history, but it appeared to me, or as it was discussed with me, that it's, that was longstanding.
Would it be possible for you to find out?
Certainly, I certainly can find out, you know, I, I don't know, I'll have to think about how to do that, because I don't know if there's anybody here that even dates, you know, that works for the city that dates back that many years.
I wasn't sure if it was, you know, something happened, whatever, you know, somebody decided, hey, this is more efficient, was it staff, maybe the city council at the time? Somebody obviously approved for that, you know, to happen, and I didn't know, you know, was it documented?
I'd be happy to get some information, get it out to you.
Yeah, and why, you know, maybe it was for efficiency's sake, I'm not sure what, but it would, I always like to know the, you know, the history, gather the information, have an understanding, and then it just helps, I think, helps us in the solution process.
Okay, I will be certainly happy to do that for you.
Thank you.
Any questions for staff, as we move into this? Okay, well, I have before me a speaker's car, William Wirick, Councilmember William Wirick.
Indeed. I wanted to come for you tonight, because I actually accept Councilman Clapp's criticism of how I went about bringing this concern to the public discussion. And I am guilty of the fact that by focusing just at the first value of transparency, and, you know, we will conduct our business in public so our citizens can easily understand our processes and policies, kind of got laser-focused on that, and didn't look at the very end of the values, about we will be respectful and considerate of each other and all those we serve, and we will actively listen to others when we speak. And so I wanted to come and indicate that I do apologize for not coming to you first, articulating my concern, and getting your feedback. I should have done that. And I look forward to your thoughts about achieving the first value with respect to transparency and open processes between now and a part of the workshop on the 26th at 6:00 PM, so I just wanted to state that.
Right. Any questions for Councilmember?
I don't have any questions, I just want to thank you. I think that's quite honorable, noble, for you to come forward in a public way and admit, admit that, because it did catch us off, catch us all off-guard. It also, it insinuated inappropriate behavior on our part, which most of us, when I first became a planning commissioner, it was told to us that this was one of our requirements. So, we came along, we come to this meeting, we prepare for that, we go to that pre-meeting, and we do our business. So the idea that somehow there was impropriety happening, or something wrong was happening, was a shock to me, when I first heard it. And I felt accused of a crime that I never committed, or never even, even thought, never even entered my mind, that what we were doing was, had any, any form of impropriety to it. So I just want to thank you again for, you know, seeing that, and coming forward.
Yeah, I, any implication or insinuation of personal misconduct was inappropriate on my part. I, unfortunately, perhaps, I think structurally, and not personally, and I probably do that too much. You know, I just think, you know, overall procedures and structures, and I don't really think of the personalities, I just think of the overall environment. And, so, that's what I did. And I should have come here first and say, I have a concern, I'd like your feedback. I still have the concern, but I should have just come and articulated why I have the concern, and gotten your feedback. And so, hopefully, we'll have a productive discussion on the, on the 26th.
Thanks.
I just wanted to chide in, and thank you also. I appreciate that.
Likewise, thank you. This is a public discussion, so I want to invite anybody from the public to come forward who would like to participate, or more than welcome to come forward and speak. I don't have any more cards up here. Okay, so, so there's no one coming forward, so discussion amongst the commissioners, then. Who would like to, appreciate Commissioner Giagio's, you know, coming forward with that comment, I think that was well-served.
Well, I think that there's a lot to be said about the historical nature of the meeting itself, so I'm glad that Commissioner Nolan suggested that we find out the history behind it, because I'm curious myself now. Because again, as we were appointed, we were told this was just a mandatory meeting, that this was part of the process, and I always just looked at it as part of the process, it was an opportunity for us to take a very complex set of information. This week, obviously, is not very complex, it's very easy, but there's, we all know there's times when our packet is two inches thick, full of intensely detailed information, which requires a lot of our time to, to look into, and we're not micro-focused on these, these items as staff is. Staff is intimately involved with this, and we do need to have some kind of format to be able to help process the, the information, or to be able to ask and clarify certain technical aspects of the, of the submittals. So, I use that opportunity, first of all, we're in the, the idea that somehow we were doing this behind closed doors, when we're in the middle of the Ojai Cafe Emporium, in the middle of the room, sometimes conversation, I'm, I'm not even thinking about who else is in the room, and it's usually packed with people, and we're just talking away. So obviously, we're not concerned about violating any ethical Brown Act, or anything else, because first of all, I never even thought that was a violation, and we found out from the attorneys that it isn't a violation. Okay, it's completely legal, and those discussions are very open, and it is mostly for, in my part, to clarify these very complex issues that, that come up, and it gives us an opportunity to do that. Now, is that the only format in which we can do that? Probably not. But that's the one that was proposed to me when I became a commissioner, and I still see no problem with it. I think it's also very efficient for the city to allocate that time for Kathleen, that two hours a day, that one hour in the morning, one hour in the afternoon, versus all of us trying to call her at different times, in different, of the day, of the week, and her having to drop what she does. So, to allocate a time period to process this is very good. So, whether we change the format of it or not, the, the need is still there, and I, I still see nothing wrong with the format that's there now, but I'm open to other suggestions.
You know, another important point is, you know, we get our packages mostly on a Friday afternoon, so you, you know, you have the weekend to process it, and then, you know, you have your workdays to process, and you know, and as you said, there's a lot of information to digest sometimes, with the, you know, the amount that's in the package. And, you know, for myself, and, you know, and I don't know about the rest of you, but I find it's a good time for me to ask questions. If I have questions, or concerns, or whatever, that's, you know, that, that hour, you know, whichever way we conduct it, in a different way, I still think it's an important, I think it's an important time to...
Along those lines, I think, I think there's a perception by the public that we have access to these reports, these agendized items, maybe weeks in advance, and I think the best indication of that was when we had the cell tower item come before us, and the crowd was, to put it mildly, outraged, and we had only looked at that for less than, what, four days? And the assumption on the, the perception from the public is that we've been sitting on this, and it's been something that we've been basically thinking about, talking about, informing opinions about, where really, we were at that point, just getting informed. So, to understand that, how that works, in terms of timing, and how information is disseminated to this commission is very important, and the timeline is very short, and that all falls back to this idea of how efficient we can be with that time, once we're there. So, I hardly agree with Commissioner Nicklin, that, you know, the need and efficiency for these meetings.
You know, I also think, you know, when we come to meetings, we've got to be best prepared, and we also, you know, want to move through our agenda items, because sometimes people have to sit you out till nine, 10, 11 o'clock at night before they, so you want to be, you know, really well-prepared, and to be able to just move the meeting forward, and, and make a decision, and, and, you know, ask the appropriate questions to staff, and so, at that time as well, other questions, or, you know, so...
Yeah, I had a few comments, and I agree that I appreciate having, you know, with my other commissioners, about the need for having that pre-meeting, and whatever that format is, it may be, continue to be what we have, it may be something else, which I'm probably fine with. But the value that I get from it is, and sometimes it's not even talking about an item that's in our packet. For instance, I've been, and I mentioned this at city council, I've been chair for two of the subcommittees since 2010, and sometimes I have a question, it's like, well, how can I move this forward in the process? Do I need to talk to staff? Do I need to go to city council? You know, what's my next move? Or what do you think about such and such? Because we've been working, like, the first several years, I worked really closely with the planning department, because we're, of course, the community is out of planning, but as of the last, I don't know, year and a half, or, or I'm doing a lot with Public Works, but there is definitely collaboration between the two, of course. One of them is the planning, and one of is the implementation. So a lot of times, I, that's an opportunity for me to do that, and it's also an opportunity for me to, you know, the other commissioners that happen to be sitting at that meeting, get to find out about it. Because I don't always know, you know, what's the next step? Where do I go with this? Is, is it okay if I, as a planning commissioner, call Caltrans and say that I'm a planning commissioner from Ojai? Is that okay to do that, or not? So that type of thing. And then sometimes, you know, maybe the topic is of variance, or something in our code, and we have questions like, well, what is that, what exactly does that mean? And what can we do or not do, you know, on the state level, or what have you? So it's not necessarily that we're talking about a project, but it's generally, you know, what pertains to us as planning commissioners, you know, information that we may need. And then I also feel like it does economize on the community development director's time, whether it's Kathleen, or someone that would spend before or after her. It seems to be more concise, and of course, we can contact her with any additional things, but I think it covers a lot of information in a short period of time. So, and then as far as, you know, the meals go, you know, if we decided that the restaurant thing is great, and I'm okay if I pay for my own meal, I have, I'm not doing this to get a meal out of it. It, it, it's convenient, it's nice, and I appreciate it, and I thank the city, you know, that I could come at breakfast, or there's my lunch hour, but I just wanted to put that out there.
You know, I do agree transparency is very important, you know, you know, the public's got a right to know what's being said, and, so, you know, it's just, you know, the way we're going to conduct this meeting, and how we're going to conduct it, in the future.
My ninth-grade English teacher used to say that, if you don't share a premise, you can't have a conversation. And I don't share the premise that this is about anything to do with the planning commission. I think that this was a politically motivated attack on the planning commission. Mr. Wirick, you say you think structurally, and yet, you structurally leave out the most important piece, which were the emails that preceded your letter. A 20-year tradition, two very nasty emails from members of the building appeals board, completely impugning the planning commission in the worst possible way, and within two days, you're writing your letter to us, for which you're now apologizing. So, structurally, I think you cannot apologize without somehow connecting the dots with those emails. And I don't believe this has anything to do with transparency on the planning commission, I think I was clear about that on the 28th. So, I really feel like, I'd like the city council to be searching their conscience, and quit playing house of cards, and let's put our cards on the table at that meeting, because I would really like to talk about what's really going on here.
I guess I'd have to concur with Commissioner Zabilla, there, there seems to be a two-pronged, you know, concepts flowing through here, it's, how do we deal with the pre-meeting? And the other concept being, why, how did it come about, and why are we dealing with it in the first place? And that is the portion that, it troubles me as well. I heard our mayor say that it's not personal, but it's very personal. You cannot separate the dynamic of personalities on this commission from the accusations and insinuations that were passed forward in that email, pure and simple. There's more to it than transparency. There's more going on here, and I think that's the discussion what Commissioner Zabilla's moving forward, would like to move forward on. And I think it's important that we do. I think we need to get to the bottom of it, find out where we're at. Are we, do we have the confidence of our city council members? Are we working with the idea that, given the authority that we have, that we have the backing of this, of them, hey, we're not here to make the perfect decision every time, we know that, we're human, but we're going to do our darndest to make that right decision? And that's what we've been empowered to do. Regardless of what has been asserted, that's why we're all here, voluntarily, to move forward in the best possible way that represents what our city and this community's all about. And when things like this come up, it creates discontent, it creates division. That's not good. Hey, I'm all for conversation, but let's get down to it, if we're going to have that conversation. Okay? So, is there any further conversation from this board?
I have a comment. I'm hoping when we have the city council meeting, that we do, you know, whatever, I'm agreeing with Commissioner Zabilla, and Chair Foster, that it's two-pronged, and I, you know, I just stated, you know, I'm into transparency, if I prefer having the meeting, if, you know, the format changes, great, I don't, I'll pay for my own lunch, I thank you for coming forward. But, I read the emails also, and that's the other side of it, and what, what's the motivation behind that? And I completely agree with you, what you said, and I, I would encourage the city council, or whoever, whatever's behind it, for that to come out at the meeting, because we're here to serve the city council, and once again, if you, if you don't feel confident in us, you know, then, okay, let us know, and whatever needs to happen, needs to happen, but it needs to be transparent. And if we're talking about transparency, and there's, you know, secret emails going on, and we don't know about it, that's not transparency. So, let us, let us know. I think, once again, if we're going to work together, and enough our goals, the council's and the commission's goal is to, the greater good for our community, the only way we can do that is if we're transparent, and if we collaborate and work together. I'm hoping that's the direction we can go in.
Any further comments? It's time for me to... Councilmember Wirick.
Yeah, I just want to state for the record that...
Yeah, I just want to state for the record that if I'm on a receipt list for an email, I didn't respond to any of those. I did not respond on purpose because I did not want to be part of that thread. But I can't control what I get. And my statement was immediately public. I didn't, you know, I mean, I just made it public, laid it out there, there it was. And so, I'm not sure it's appropriate to criticize me for emails that other people Criticize me for words I say. That's fair. And I think what we're dealing with here, as I, as I stated it and, yeah, in my statement that was handed out for the public from the beginning, is that it is the council's responsibility to try and achieve best practices in terms of protocol for the, how we handle, how we set protocol for each board and the commissions, for the board and the commissions. That is our, one of our jobs. And I'm hoping that we can go forward in that spirit. That I've stated an issue, I'm not, I stated it from the beginning that I wasn't interested really in a debate about legality, but in a, in a debate about best practice. I still want to engage in that debate. And I appreciate the willingness to consider different formats that would still achieve the goal of productivity while also, hopefully, I think there are available alternative formats that would maintain the productivity of, kind of like an agenda meeting that you're talking about, that's what some jurisdictions call it, and still allow the activity to be part of the public record. That's how I feel. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have thoughts on, on other alternative meetings? Go ahead, Mac, or whatever you, was on your mind.
Well.
It's open forum here.
I think that this has really given us an opportunity to look at a lot of different things. I think, I think this has really opened up many, many doors, not just about the pre-meetings. I think there's a whole host of things that we can explore, you know, in our joint meeting that have sprung from this. For example, I'm, I'd just like some clarification on the Building and Appeals Board, what their role is. It seems it's kind of ambiguous and it's been silently kind of growing. I'm not really sure, you know, it was my understanding that they met only when there was an appeal for a building thing, but I understand they've been meeting regularly. I'm not sure about that. I think it's also an opportunity for us to discuss with the council, what are the expectations of commissioners on any commission and their levels of respect and solidarity with other commissioners? What are those expectations? I think that's another opportunity. Because the way I kind of, you know, the best way I can kind of look at the planning commission is similar to, to the Supreme Court, you know? Councilmembers come and go. Planning commissioners have far outlasted many City Councilmembers. And I think, you know, it's important that the planning commission and these commissions should be above politics and outside of politics. And it's regretful that we've slid into such a realm, you know, if, and, in fact, one of those, what even got me thinking about this was, one of those emails said that, you know, some planning commissioners don't ask questions. And, you know, I don't think Clarence Thomas has asked a question since 2006. That's a fact. You know, like, so, I don't know. I just think that this is really an opportunity, as you kind of said, to really get down to some deeper questions, as Councilmember Weirick said, structurally, about autonomy and respect and, and really, what is our role? What is our relationship with the City Council and with other commissions? Those are my thoughts.
Thank you.
Commissioner Legowski, just for the record, the, the actual ordinance that established the Building Appeals Board does have the one function. And if you, you read the entire ordinance, there's another part of where the council can ask for input and advice on particular issues. So, there's like, there's two parts to the actual ordinance, so I just wanted to, to point that out. And there's another part too, which is interesting about the Building Appeals Board, is that it's also the local housing appeals board. And there's another statutory element to that, which is kind of ambiguous, like you said, but nevertheless, part of the state statute. So, these functions are required for each local government to do. It's required by statute to have a Building Appeals Board and a Local Housing Appeals Board. And the council chose, if it's not, the council doesn't set up a separate board, then the council has to act in those, in that capacity. So, that's basically what happened here. But I just want to make that one point. Okay?
Thank you.
We're good? Good for now? Good for now? All right. Then we're going to move on to our-
I just, I want to point out clarification. So, prior to the meeting that you have in your joint meeting on the 26th, you would like me to prepare just a history of how this came to be. Is there any other directives that you want done for that? I just want to make sure I know my tasks.
If there's a, I don't recall the exact, if there was a document or a structure that, that outlined the requirements for-
When you first-
Yes.
Take the oath and that, et cetera? Okay.
Can we, can we get a copy of that so we, we know what that was?
Like a job description?
Yeah. Yeah, because I've, I met with the city attorney about this and some of the things that was said to me was that we're to act almost like jurors, okay? And I was confused by that. And yet, this, and yet, the planning commission has a different obligation than the City Council. The City Council, as an elected member, can discuss, and this is where I need clarification, can discuss with the public issues because they're elected, whereas we are, are not, are not to. So, we're to keep quiet on our opinion on the issues, yet the City Council, I want to clarify that.
You would like to know, along with your job description, you would like to know what the Brown Act allows you to do and doesn't allow you to do?
Yes. We need definite clarification there.
Is that, is that it? I mean, is there any options that you would like staff to look into at all?
Options? To anything or?
Well, you know, as far as what other cities do, when they have, I mean, you know, I'm just offering, I just want to make sure I have the tasks before me.
I think we can probably just hold off on that discussion until the time's appropriate.
Sounds good.
Well, is it something that's going to be, if, I'm wondering if, I don't know. I'm not open to alternatives, so I'll say that right now. I just think it's ridiculous that we're even discussing alternatives and what we're doing works fine and we don't have a transparency problem, but that said-
Well, the reason that I'm asking is because obviously, you know, being, it's Catherine and I are planning staff for four bodies, commissions in the council, you know? So, it's Building Appeals, HPC, Planning Commission, and when planning things go to City Council. So, adding another agenda to a meeting, I just wanted to, you know, to know what has to fall off the plate in order for us to do another agenda. If you would like me to put something like that together or talk with the city manager about doing something like that? Because I think there's, there's this misconception that there's a lot of staff handling 24 people. There's 24 people that then we become staff to, which is myself. It's, there's not invisible people behind me. It's me and Catherine. So, I just want to make sure that, you know, if you're going to talk about alternatives, that you, you have staff's input about it as far as, you know, the cost and the money involved in doing that. Because obviously, we're pretty much, you know, I think there's, like I said, I think that there's just kind of a misnomer that there's more staff than there really is. Or maybe we're just liaison to you and not liaison to the HPC, which is also a seven-member board, or the Building Appeals Board, which is a five-member. So, I just want to make sure that we're, that you're, you're being realistic in your, in your options.
Yeah, I believe there's a, there's a dramatic impact on our, on staff resources with possible alternatives.
Okay.
And it'd be well advised for staff to inform themselves on that.
Well, I think like anything else, when we do, when we do a staff report for City Council, we put in fiscal impact, you know, to making changes. And that's all I'm saying is that maybe, you know, but that's something that can be done as an outcome of that joint meeting, it doesn't have to be prepared ahead of time.
Mm-hmm. Shouldn't staff have an opinion about what format they want to use as well?
I think that staff should be just limited in explaining the alternatives and what the cost options are. I don't think staff should really play a role in that. I just want to make sure that if you're off, if you're offering options, that then we kind of give you what it's going to take for us to do that option as far as either staffing levels and the costs. That's pretty much all, the voice we would have in it.
Well, I see that's where this is, is, conversation's going to go inevitably. And I think it'd be well, time well spent to outline those costs and responsibilities and time on resources to the best of your ability, you know?
Okay, I'll see if I can-
It's going, that conversation's going to come up.
I'll see if I can-
Whether or not we agree with it or not, it's another completely, completely different matter.
I had a comment. Oh, go ahead, Mac.
I just, I just want to comment and point out how sad this is. This is our one, right, joint meeting with the City Council all year and we're going to spend the majority of this conversation talking about this? And it's like, we have so much more pressing business at hand, like, that we're going to eat up more staff time, more energy. It's, I'm just disappointed in this. That's my comment.
So, yeah, so along those lines, the question that I had was, at our joint meeting, there typically have been one hour, and I'm not sure if an agenda's been developed yet, is it just going to be this topic or are there going to be other topics for that evening?
On the agenda planning guide that, that the city clerk puts out, this is the only topic I saw on it that was given to us on Tuesday.
So, my thought is, okay, so there's an hour meeting. Do we want to discuss this a little bit more here and now and come with something, come to that meeting with a little more information, knowing that we're only going to have an hour? I'm just throwing it out.
I mean, we can go around the table and get our opinions on it, I suppose, if we wanted it. I mean, that's, that's our option here. Or not.
Well, I mean, Mac's point is, I take Mac's point. I mean, this whole thing is a waste of time. It's a waste of staff resources. It's a bogus issue. And this is exactly the outcome. We are wasting valuable time, valuable resources that we could be using to serve the city. And instead, we're doing this.
Right.
This works. What we're doing works. It's not a problem. And you know that. It's not a problem.
I agree. If it's not broken, it doesn't need to be fixed. And it's not broken.
You know, this, the hour we have from six till seven, you know, it's going to limit discussion too. You know, it's whether it's a, you know, you fine-tuning your discussion or you, you know, and how open you can make the discussion and what's going to come of it. And, you know, we could be three-quarters of the way through the discussion, seven o'clock's there, where, you know, the meeting starts. It's your, you know, your very point there. So, you know, I've thought of different options, but, you know, as Rosa Lee said, it's working and it's, you know.
So, let's move on then. All right? We're going to move forward into our informational items and hear from our, about the director's report and subsequent actions.
Okay, on your director's decision report, item, is that item four? You see there's a couple of tree permits, mostly hazardous trees, which we try to move quickly on in getting those removed. Director's exemption to change out four windows and a door in a C1 zone. Director's exemption to paint a building in a C1 zone and to do some repair. As you know, we have this new procedure for director's exemption when they come in, then we route those up via email to the City Council and then we wait for them. We post it on the website. We're getting a little bit more efficient in how we do that, trying to disseminate information out to the public. And then, if we don't get an objection, then we issue those director's exemptions. So, you can see, and they're coming in fairly minor with what's being proposed here. Then just some pendants and I think signs are the last two. So, kind of minor stuff that was done through directors, by the director. Then you have your code enforcement list. And again, fairly lengthy, you see a lot of cases active, a lot of them closed. We continue, I think, the Code and Compliance Inspector continues to get more sound footing on what he's doing and working through different issues and driving around the community. Again, I know this was evidently quite a shock to some members of the community, but he is actually doing proactive code enforcement, which I think some members, according to City Council, when I talked to one member of the public the other day, who came in was kind of upset about that at City Council. But, you know, again, these are things that we were asked to look at by City Council, which is, you know, construction going on without a permit during the weekends and at night, or noise, or beef blowers, those kind of general things that are easy to see from driving around. You know, he's not getting on people's property without permission or, you know, or surveilling people or that type of thing is what, you know, no one intended that to mean that. So, just open any questions, but you can just see that generally the types of complaints that are here are just the general things. Bacon building, trash, cars that don't run, you know, people living in motor homes, that kind of stuff, just a general idea. So, if you don't have any questions, I'll move on. As you know, we're going to be canceling the May 20th Planning Commission meeting. We're moving on to June 3rd, which will have California Solar Electric on it. And possibly, I think, oh yes, and a concept plan for a West Ojai address. And we're constantly, you know, by the time we go to publish this, this document of what we're doing, you know, we're always trying to move people as fast as we can. Sometimes we can't tell because they need to get a complete application into us and then we don't know how complete and how detailed that's going to be until we really take initial look at it. And if it's a good application, we'll try to move it forward for people. Given that, you know, it is moving into summer and spring when it's construction season and people do kind of want to move forward. So, with that, that's what we have going for you on June 3rd. And then I would just say that we do have, so everybody knows, you know, down at the bottom, we do have a DRP submitted for 1105 North Signal, Signal Street, which has been highly controversial, but we want to let everybody know we're working on, that's in within the first 30 days. You know, by state law, we have 30 days to review it for completeness. And, oh, it's the second one from the bottom, the concept review, 410 West Ojai, that we're going to place on the June 3rd. And the daily, 706 Daily Road is just resubmitted, so, and we haven't had a chance to look at the resubmit, so I'll be coming forward. And I'm open to any questions about any other issues, except we have, go ahead.
There was going to be a workshop, combined workshop with the City Council regarding the rentals. Is that anywhere in sight?
Is that May 16th? Oh, they both jumped up. Oh, they're both on the subcommittee? Or, so let's have them speak to that.
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that as well. Or something, Phil. Do you want an answer now?
Yeah, we have progress.
Go ahead, go ahead, council member.
We've engaged a facilitator out of San Diego, his name's Steve Alexander, correct?
Steve Alexander.
And he is amazing. So, we met with him yesterday via telephone and discussed the format in which we're going to do the workshop. And it will be scheduled as soon as possible, probably, or since, first part of June is what we're thinking.
We have the logistics.
Yeah, we've got logistical issues. Everything takes longer than-
So, this is all, this is about vacation rentals?
Yes.
This sort of thing?
It's going to be a workshop where we're going to engage the citizenry. And the basic idea is to get feedback from the community.
Mm-hmm.
That's it. Let's hear what the community has to say.
It's a good place to start.
And you, you go ahead and fill in.
Well, just add one more thing.
Go right ahead.
And that's the, we are going to have a public education component.
Right.
Where we share some of the latest research on impacts with the community. There's some cross validations going on. There's some interesting advances in the analysis of the impacts. And also, there's been a lot of real-time development in terms of the legal environment. What- what cities can and cannot do legally in terms of case law development and statutes with respect to vacation rentals. So, we'll have that component to the presentation.
This is, this thing is just like very moving target right now.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's exploding all over in all communities in the world, actually. So, it's going to be really interesting.
Definitely needs to be addressed, and I think this is a, would be a great kickoff.
Yeah, and I just, I think it's unfortunate it didn't happen sooner, but that being said, in the same time, it's, it's become, so much has happened that it really is almost-
And quickly.
Yeah, it's almost like, if we'd done something a few years back, we may be back here addressing it anyway.
Correct, yeah. Well, that's exciting.
Yeah, it's going to be a good thing.
Thank you.
I'd also like to remind everybody that our first neighborhood planning workshop's going to be on Saturday, May 30th. It's not on this list, so mark that down. Everyone here at the city's helping me put this together. Like, Amber helped me very nicely, helped me put the training for HPC together, which is always kind of a little bit of a chore, asking people to do kind of work on Saturday. And, but it's coming together. So, we will have our first neighborhood workshop on May 30th, as it looks. And we're, I don't know if you saw the flyers that went out for the moratoriums, for the vacation rental moratorium and the fencing moratorium.
Something in the paper, correct?
Well, everybody should have got that kind of hard, yeah, stock, postcard-y type thing. We're thinking about doing something like that again for the neighborhood workshops. So, you know, kind of get it out to the public, doing our best, again, to get information out to the public. But we'll just say that at the last city council meeting, the moratorium was not extended, so that moratorium on fencing will be terminating. And then also, as a follow-up, your two items, the height ordinance changes that you took action on and sent up to city council, that's done, that's all approved. And then, coming up on May 12th will be the second reading for the M1 that you took action on. So, those have moved forward just fine, just as expected. And that's kind of all I have to report.
You had something.
Okay. I, I had a question. I mean, we spent so much time on the second unit compliance program. Where, where is that at? I thought we left that, we handed it over to, or where, where are we with that?
So, so the way that that was, was being processed was that it was decision of the Building Appeals Board and the, and the Planning Commission, at the time the bodies were comprised the way they were, to separate it out and have Planning Commission do the Title 10, which is your, under your jurisdiction, and, and the Building Appeals Board to do Title 9, which was under their jurisdiction. There were final action taken and the minutes reflect that. And then it went up to city council, but then the Building Appeals Board members came before council and felt that they were, I was remiss in not taking that back to them yet again. And so, it was sent to council, down back to Building Appeals Board. And this time, at this time now, they've gone beyond their Title 9 into your Title 10 items, and they're sending that back to city council.
So, are we going to have an upper-
Yeah, shouldn't we get in, sorry.
No, city council has not directed you to look at it again. That was my understanding, that they directed them and only them to look at it. And that's all they were interested in. I guess the, the impression was that you had a chance to look at the, the building. You saw, when I brought it to you, we scheduled those meetings. One had to occur before the other. They weren't going to be simultaneous. And so, they, they took action, and then it was incorporated what they did, and then both of them, you saw. So, to be fair, you saw both their work, even though you didn't take action on it. And so, the issue was, they, they wanted it to go back the other way. And so, that's how it went back to them.
I think we should hear from council member Clapp.
God. I hate to intervene, but there's something, you said something that really concerned me. You said that the Building Appeals Board stretched out of their Title 9 and went into the Title 10.
That's my understanding, that they did.
That, that is of concern to me.
Uh-huh.
Because that's out of the jurisdiction.
Well, I, I, I didn't go to the last meeting, but that's my understanding from the, from this, that my understanding from the city manager was that they are advising the city council on their opinion on the Title 10 items. And my, and that is not, that is something that they, my understanding was, that the council asked them to do that.
For the Building Appeals Board to go into the Title 10 elements?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
So, I'm only trying to make this point of clarification, because my planning commissioners, and with the time that I was liaison to the Building Appeals Board, they both, now the build, the boards have different comprise of, Chair, is it okay if I address, address this? Thank you.
I'm sorry.
No, no, it's fine. At the time, we were having difficulty. We spent almost nine months going back and forth, and we weren't making really any headway. And so, we caught, I think I was probably the one that suggested this, how about you just separate them out, and you deal with this, and you deal with that. And they all agreed. So, that kind of gave everybody their area of expertise. And that's how it was brought forward. But then, like I said, then there was an issue that, because one went before the other one, you know, we didn't have simultaneous meetings, that the Planning Commission did get to see what the Building Appeals Board did, although they didn't take any action on it. And the Building Appeals Board felt slighted because they didn't see the incomprehensive package that went up to city council. So, when you guys took act, when you guys, when I put the whole package together and sent it up, then it was sent back down to the Building Appeals Board, but not back to the Planning Commission.
Okay, for clarification then, so the Building Appeals Board has had the opportunity to all, to modify, change, or amend the Title 10 element of this document without the Building, the Planning Commission's opportunity to review it?
That's my understanding, yes.
I'm not comfortable with that. So, where do we go with that?
What?
That seems to be a, a stretching outside of their zone of authority. It seems inappropriate. And I, as a council member, was unaware that that was occurring. And I would like to know, have your advice about what to do about the matter.
Well, I think, I think the issue is that the, when it comes back up to the city council, you have the, you're within your powers, or within your, to, to accept their advice or to not accept their advice. But my planning commissioners were concerned and have been, and have been inquiring of me, because, you know, obviously, we felt that we did have a joint meeting at one time, and there was consensus during this joint meeting, correct? And so, you know, to, when something is decided on together, to unilaterally change part of it, I think is what is concerning to them. And that's why they've been asking me about, well, how far are they going into it? And when I was told their, do you understand I'm saying? They've met together?
Are you speaking of who was concerned about how far they've gone into what?
The Planning Commission, I'm sorry. The Planning Commission was concerned about why all this is being done and going meeting after meeting and not involving them, when they had mutually already decided as boards and commissions that they would do the separate items the way they did.
Right. And I, I kind, I could understand their concern when the Building Appeals Board has gone into their area of authority and modified what they've done.
Only made recommendations. They're not modifying. This is only a recommendation to city council. Just trying to be point of clarification. Yes, they're made, they're, they're advising on something that's out of their area.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
So, that's kind of where, that I know where it's going. I don't know when it's going back up to city council, or, do you know, Amber, is it already gone? You don't know? Okay. We, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to put you on the spot. I'm not, I'm not really sure. It might be going soon. And I could, we could check that. Oh, you're going to look? Thank you. She's going to look for you.
More doors are open?
Yes. I have a comment too. And just about this, I don't have a problem, I mean, we, you know, we agreed, the board and the commission, that we would split this joint adventure. And I don't have a problem with them looking at what we did and maybe making a comment. But at the same time, we should have had a chance to look at the entire document before it went back to city council and, you know, read it start to finish, in addition to what we had originally done and what the Building Appeals Board did. That's just my opinion.
Okay, I don't need.
And then, but I, you know, I don't think, I just feel like them cutting into Title 10 was, is not appropriate.
Well, I do, I do think that, you know, trying to have a collaborative work environment between the Planning Commission and the Building Appeals Board, that maybe another joint meeting between the two of you should have been called before it goes up back. I understand what you're saying. But I think they were, that staff in the Building Appeals Board was just following what direction was given to them from the city council. Do you see it on this agenda?
It doesn't appear to be scheduled before June.
Thank you, Amber.
Okay. All right. Moving on to subcommittee reports.
Excuse me, my mistake.
Oh, you do have a date?
Apologize.
Okay.
Second unit compliance guidelines appears to have been scheduled for the May 12th meeting. And I'll just take a look at it, at the agenda really quick to verify.
May 12th meeting.
Be next Tuesday.
No.
Isn't it?
I'm looking right now.
No?
Councilman Wierich.
In deference to, to Councilman Clapp being out of the country, I had an email from Rob Clark today that it was going to be May 26th.
Oh, oh, thank you.
That's what I heard.
Thank you. My information is from last Thursday, so.
Okay.
So, I mean, various council people we have emailed today saying, because Councilman Clapp is going to be out of the country on the 12th, that it was going to happen on the 26th.
Okay. Maybe 26.
What happened was, we hit 10:30 and did not continue agenda items. So, we hit 10:30, and we chose not to continue with going past 10:30, with taking up, we're not supposed to do that unless there's an extraordinary situation. So, we decided to, I think unanimously,
Yeah, that's correct.
Well, unanimously agreed that we would just continue the two items, one of which was the second unit item on the agenda, and the next one was the fine for the second, for the vacation rental violations. And so, we continued those, I believe. And then, again, because Councilman Clapp wants to participate in that discussion, it was put on the next meeting, when you're going to be returning.
Yes, 20, it'll be-
The 26th, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, then I guess, so, in other words, that was already prepared for the past agenda? So, if you're wanting to know what the recommendations are, if you'd like, I'll get that for you and send it out, email to everybody. Because that, that's what he's saying, that the agenda was already prepared, they just didn't get to the item. So, we can, I can email that out to everybody.
Well, I guess it would be at the pleasure of the city council. Right? I, I don't know.
But for notification, or?
If, if you're asking if, do you want my input, or is that what you're-
Well, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, since it's already been publicly, it's already out for public consumption out on the, it was, it was scheduled for the April 28th meeting, or whatever it would have been, past one. It's already been on the agenda. They didn't get to it. It's already public information. I'd be happy to forward it to you.
Please do.
I, I will.
Okay.
All right, can you report?
Mr. Nolan.
Thank you. And this actually has to do with pending projects also. So, as the Chair of the Model Landscape Water Ordinance, I have, and I bring this up, and I probably sound like a broken record, but I'm going to be the broken record again tonight. And I'm wondering why that landscape ordinance guidelines just keeps getting pushed on the agenda and not being addressed.
So, I want to make this very clear. The ordinance has already been adopted. It's just a handout that needs to be done.
Right. And the reason I'm asking is, that was part of our committee's work that we did. And tonight, we had another set of plans that came to us that were incomplete. Those guidelines, it's this great checklist that you can use at the counter, that you can hand to the applicant, that when they're doing the permit, or when they have to do the submittal, and they're going to review, do we have everything in our, in this packet? There it all is. When the building inspector goes out to the job site to inspect, there's a checklist. We've, we did this in it. This has been going on for several years. So, I'm only seeing it because the work's been done. And rather than us saying, oh, well, you know, there's this transition, we don't have the information, why don't, why are we delaying the process for approving that?
Well, I-
And getting it incorporated into our system. Orig, I'm just going to, one, one last thing. When I got onto the Planning Commission, there was this whole thing about the public just, they didn't, nobody knew what to do. Well, they're not telling us what to do at the counter, and there was all this confusion, incomplete packages. So, part of our task was not only to review the entire, do the ordinance, but to come up with those guidelines. And this great, I'm going to say great, because I think it is great, checklist to make it easier for everybody. But we just keep pushing it off. I really just, I can hardly stand to have another package come to us that's incomplete, because nobody knows what to do.
Okay, so let me, let me just, Chair, can I answer that? Okay. So, I don't believe that you're ever going to see in, in a small project like this, that type of information coming to Planning Commission. If that's something that you want, then, let me just explain this. That kind of information, generally speaking, a person is not going to put that kind of effort into something that would normally be seen at the building permit stage in a planning permit, because they don't know whether you're going to approve that, those landscapes are, those landscape planters are not. So, the idea of having a pallet or, you know, those types of things that come in, the irrigation, the detail on the irrigation, the details on the, you know, water efficient coefficient data and all those types of things, it's, it's, we're, we will never be moving people forward. It's, it's just such a resistance here in this community, because you're asking somebody to provide things that they would normally provide at the building permit stage. I know that you permit, you know, some people do. We've had the winery provide that, and that's fine. In this particular case, it was, it took us a lo, I just wanted to explain this to you. I'm not trying to make it, not trying to make excuses. I'm trying to explain to you that this, this person that came for, before you tonight, did all that work without a building permit. Let's not get lost in the middle of this over water efficient criteria.
Well, I'm not doing that.
So, I'm just trying to say that we, we had to go out, stop work order on this man. You heard him say that those trees were, were in serious, because we stopped work on him. We made them stop. This is not a situation where people are coming in friendly, asking us how to move their, their, their project forward. We got to a place of being friendly with this person. So, while I don't want the public to be, have the impression that we're accepting things without everything being in here, being in here. This is a situation where that work was done. You know, we stopped him. They were angry. We're just making the building nicer. You know, you heard him, you know. We got to the point of explaining, those things require a permit in Ojai now. Well, they didn't use to. Well, they do now, okay? So, it is working through. When this guy gets his building permit to do this, he will have that information in there. But for us to get that kind of information from somebody, they're going to push back as hard as they can, saying, I don't want to do that level of detail until the construction drawings, because I don't even know I'm going to get approved. That's what they're going to say. I'm fine with pushing back with that and making that an absolute, I won't bring anything to you, but understand that then I'm going to get a pushback from the community, saying, you know, this is something we normally provide at building permit stage. That's just as simple as it gets. As far as the guidelines, if they already exist, we're happy to start using them. I apologize. I got in the middle of this because I didn't work on the landscape ordinance. Mr. Fletcher did. My understanding was that, you know, he updated the ordinance to the state model ordinance. That was something he took forward. I was asked to follow up with the, the landscape guidelines. My workload is, comes down through the city manager, what he puts as a priority. We've had a lot of things moved down from city council. Just so that you understand workload, I'm going to give it to you again about workload. You know, we've done all kinds of ordinance changes this year. We've done a lot of environmental documents this year. So, it's pretty fluid.
Yeah, it's obviously, there's a, there's a lot of work here. But I, I got the impression, though, from Commissioner Nolan, that she doesn't expect the whole-
Yeah.
-checklist at, at this point.
Yeah, I made a mistake when I brought this up. I should not have mentioned this project. I was not even, I was just using this as an example.
Right.
It's fine, okay. If you look at the, the guidelines, there's a, that, they're not here, of course.
Mm-hmm.
But the guidelines that we did, there's one for conceptual plans. So, no, you don't have to put in your evapotranspiration rate. You don't have to do all the calc, it's the basic step. It's actually the basic step that's in our landscape standards. It says, you must submit 20, the size of the sheet, you need to have a legend, you need to have a north arrow, the basics, but we put it in a checklist format. So, it's, it makes it easier for the applicant. It's not asking them to do anything that they weren't required to do already. In addition, it goes into the construction document phase. It goes into what you need to do. Also, it goes beyond that to what is needed for, say, the building inspector. So, that portion would not apply initially to the client, but when they do get to the permitting stage, you would have it. So, all I'm trying to say is, is that it's done.
We can implement if it's done. I've never seen it, so I'll look for it.
Initially, I'd be happy to give it to you again. I mean, of course, the past city attorney had it, the past community development director had it. But, I just bringing it up because we were asked to do it by- I just bringing it up because we were asked to do it by City Council. It wasn't something that we just said, oh, we're gonna do this, I don't have anything else to do. We were asked to form these subcommittees and they said, we need, this is what we need, and how can we all help to alleviate this problem that we continue to have with misunderstandings and people not knowing what they need to do? So.
I think it's really important.
If you would like to make a meeting-
A lot of those things right now.
It doesn't, I'm, I'm offering it again as a gift, to say it could make your life easier, it could make our lives easier, it could make the applicants, it could make the building inspectors, the work has been done. If, you wanted to meet for 15 minutes and you look at it, I would, don't want to take a lot of anyone's time and just say, look, could you have this at the counter, just to make-
Commissioner, is it just a matter of printing it out and putting it, making it available at the counter?
Well, I was, way I was-
You have a city letterhead on it or something.
The way I was instructed by it was that, that it was, it needed to be updated to the standards of what Joe Fletcher changed in the ordinance.
So there's a discrepancy that exists between the two?
I might be wrong, but that's what I was instructed to do. I just, I've had a, I just wanna add to that, you know, I've had a number of comments from you commissioners about the kind of submittals we're getting from the public. And I just wanna make this very clear that we work and we meet with people all the time and tell them what is expected. You know, it is a very difficult position to get people to move to getting submittals. I mean, this, this incident tonight where I think staff is always tasked with, you know, the incomplete information, with not having legend in here. This is, this is a responsibility of the applicant, because they bring these into us, because we don't have a way of reproducing this size, you know, document. And they didn't reproduce one of the sheets, but that's done, the way that Ojai is already, always operated, to make this very clear, is that that's done the week the packet goes out. Now, I wanna change that, because what happens is, it's already publicly noticed, the public's already been in. They don't, we're calling them, where are your plans, where are your plans, where are your plans, but it's very hard to change that here. People are so used to it, that it's very hard. Why do I need to give you 12 plans upfront? So it's a very slow process to change the culture and we're very much trying to. But I know that, that it's frustrating to get the kind of submittals that we get, we have to bring forward to you. But oftentimes, you will hear people, like the meeting, two meetings ago where the man said, I'm so frustrated, staff wouldn't move me forward. You know, I, I was incomplete and I was incomplete again and I was incomplete again. So at some point, you know, we have to kinda draw a compromise. We're just never gonna move this person forward, because they're never gonna give us what we want. They're never gonna give us the kind of plans that are complete in detail that we want. Maybe this information is good enough. And oftentimes, I have pointed out to you that it's, and I think you guys all know what I'm talking about, that it's just plain complex and you can't figure out what they're doing, because it's so, it's not even, it's not, you know, existing proposed like you'd, you'd normally get. And it's very, it's very frustrating for staff, but I just wanna explain it. That's how, that's the push-pull of it.
So, the beauty-
Yeah.
Of this guideline is that you hand, you can have it at the counter, you could go over it with someone, there's a little box next to each item. And so essentially, when they came back with their submittal, they could hand you that little checklist. And I, everything spelled out perfect in nice orderly fashion, so that when you get the package, they can't say, oh, I forgot, because they have their checklist there with everything. And if something doesn't apply, you could at the counter just go, okay, I'll circle, these apply for you, just circle them. But it's all there. I'm just trying to make life easier for people.
I, I appreciate it. I'm not, I'm not trying to give you a funny look, I'm just trying to say that generally, maybe, maybe I, you're, I don't wanna blather the point, but, but generally people, we tell them what they need and they write back to us, why? How come? How about I don't need that? And then it goes back day after day after day with, why can't I?
Well, I mean, doesn't it become your discretion then to, to deem it incomplete?
Yep.
Until they get it right?
That's right.
If it's laid out for them.
I mean, the checklists are great, I think they're, don't get me wrong, I think they're a great han, they're, they're, they're a great tool. That, that doesn't solve the problem of the person that thinks that none of those apply to them.
I understand. You're trying to facilitate the project and move it forward. But at what expense, when it comes to us and lack of information and that sort of thing? And I'm not reflecting personally on you at all, but I, because I think it's within the processing that the breakdown occurs. So I'm, I'm certainly on board with having a checklist. I think it, uh-
We have, we have to pass it around.
Just simplifies, just simplifies the process.
Well, we've implemented quite a number of them, and I don't know if they've gotten down to you, they often are sent up to council, but we've implemented quite a number of them, trying to get people aware of the checklist that are out there and what they need to do. I mean, just for instance, you know, what requires a director's exemption, what is a design review permit? So, you know, we're definitely working on those and I hear, I hear the complaints and we are trying to move those forward.
There's a lot, there's a lot there. Okay.
Should move on to the Complete Streets. Okay, I'm sorry, I hope I didn't get too riled up, but I just felt like, you know, after so many years of, we worked for a couple of years on all that stuff, it, anyway. I feel like it's, something should happen with it, not sit on, in somebody's computer. Okay, on to Complete Streets. So we had our public workshop with our consultants, Nelson and Igard, in the middle of April. And we felt like we had a good turnout. They had to presentations to the public. It was on a Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday evenings. Then, of course, there was afternoon sessions for the members of the public to come in and comment. And I felt that the last presentation, you know, people were pretty happy with it, they felt like they were heard and, you know, they were interested in some of the solutions. Coming up next, they're going to be putting a draft document together, it's gonna come back to Complete Streets, we're gonna review it. And, anyway, so we're, we have to wait for that. And, and then I will say, we are working with the Public Works Department. Greg Grant has gotten a couple of grants. Two projects that we've been looking at specifically are Grand Avenue, the intersection of kind of where Summer Signal and Grand come together. And then the consultants actually came up with an idea about putting diverters in the Arbolaata. We're trying to establish some pedestrian and bike access and, of course, reduce traffic and vehicle miles traveled. So we are actually, at our next meeting, we're gonna be out on the streets, so we're gonna be going to the Arbolaata. That'll be June 3rd. I'll announce it, it's, we're gonna be leaving here at 7:20 in the morning to go out and do observations. So the Public Works Director and the members of Complete Streets. Any questions?
Is it true that Caltrans sets the speed limits on the roads, especially 33, based on the average speed limit of the cars?
Yeah.
That's true.
I think that's essentially how it works.
So that's why we can't change that from 35 to 25, is that curve coming into town?
Possibly. I, I know the sign was moved at one time. But I don't have the exact answer for that, but I think you're going in the right direction. We could find out more, but.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Now it's time for our City Council Liaison's report. Councilmember Clapp.
Hi. Well, it's gonna be good to meet with you guys. I think you've brought up some really good points. There was some, some question about how much water we, in the city of Ojai, were gonna be required to preserve, whether it was gonna be 32 or 36%. And I learned today, it's going to be 36% required reduction for Golden State water users. So that's pretty amazing. And the lake's at 49.3% and falling. And we've talked about the vacation rentals. And I can't think of any other things. Am I missing anything? And that would be it. Any questions?
Is that, is that Golden State and does that include Casitas, or is that just specifically Golden State?
I think Casitas might be 32%, but I'm not really sure. The graph that I looked at right now just showed Golden State at 36. My understanding is Casitas is 32, but I, I couldn't say for certain. Because not everybody in town's Golden State. Some, there's a few people in, within the city limits of Ojai that are Casitas.
Are those rate reductions, uh?
One, one quick, Golden State actually has some customers outside-
Yeah, they do outside as well.
Of the city limits, so it's not exactly-
Right.
Uh, one-on-one. There are, Golden State goes outside the city limits and Casitas comes inside the city limits, so.
There's a crossover.
Yeah, there is.
So it's a 32% reduction?
36%.
36% reduction, based on 2013 rates? They're going back two years, is that essentially what's happening?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
And the way they're, the methodology is still not, I think it's to be determined. So that'll be interesting, because I, I think about myself and probably a lot of people that have been really conserving water and hardly use any water already. So how, how can they possibly reduce 36%? And I was talking to the gentleman that helps at the OB GMA about that, he's our, kind of our strategist, water expert. And he said that he's worked with communities that had a similar situation and they take that into consideration and they're tearing about who gets impacted with it, but we don't know what Golden State will do. And of course, the fear with that is when you do a 36% reduction, they'll go to the PUC, because they wanna make, they are guaranteeing their ratepayers a minimum of 8% return on their money. So if we're forced to reduce 36%, then our RAM charges could go up, because we're not consuming enough water so that their shareholders can make 8% on their money.
There's a lot of questions to be answered.
The water wars have begun.
Yeah, a lot of work to be done. Well, are there any questions for Councilmember Clapp? We appreciate you coming forward and thank you for your input.
And we'll see you on the 26th, right? Do you want, would you like to have more time? Do you think it would be of value to go to an hour and a half instead of an hour?
Commissioner Lajowski thinks so?
I agree too. I, I have always found that that hour is really a short meeting. I know we've tried to do a couple of visioning sessions and we kinda just go around and we all say our vision and it's like, okay, we're done.
It's an incredibly fast hour, isn't it?
Nothing really gets, um, there's not really any next steps or, you know, any goals or anything typically established, or at least I haven't. So I would, I would agree to the hour and a half.
If we can increase it to an hour and a half? Okay. I'll see, um-
I don't think there'd be any.
See if maybe we could do that.
All right.
I don't know the process of doing that. Maybe Kathleen, would you have an idea on how I would proceed with that, because it's only me?
I think you need to vet that through the City Manager to, you know, obviously, these folks would be willing to do it. So then I guess he would probably inquire of the rest of the City Council.
Okay, I'll do that. Okay, all right.
Is there gonna be public comment with this whole thing or not? Because that can make a lot more time too.
You know, that's a really good point. Trying to think with those meetings, whether we have public comment.
I think we do have public comment. Yes, we do.
Yeah, I think, because it's a, because it's a public meeting. So that is a really good point, so you could take up a lot of time with public comment.
That's why I said earlier, an hour is actually very short, actually.
When you're waiting for the train to come, an hour is really long. These meetings, it's like, somebody turns it up, no thanks. Yeah, so I, I think it would be, make a lot of sense.
All right, well, we'll let staff and run it by City Count, uh, City Manager and go from there.
Okay, good enough. All right. Thank you guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Yeah, Commissioner Lajowski.
I have one more question.
Sure.
Oh, no, thank you. I know that Chair Foster, you and I discussed this briefly in passing at one point, but I know that other commissions have a regular presence at the City Council meetings.
Right.
I was wondering if you wanted to discuss that anymore?
That's probably a good, I have discussed it with a couple of our members here. I know, I've been attending, attempting to attend at least one meeting a month. But I think it would be, I'd like to put before us all that we maybe set up a rotation amongst ourselves, so,
Liaison.
So that we're a Planning Commissioner liaison to every City Council member to make sure that at least one of us is there, if not more. I think that has been something that has led to us to be out of the loop. And I'd like to hear your response on that, if you, we could set that up.
So we actually, I'm not sure when it was, but sometime, I wanna say in the last couple of years. And I believe all the commissions did it, agreed that the chairs would attend for the year that they're a chair, the Planning Commission meetings. I mean, the City Council meetings. I don't, we'd have to go back and look. I know the year when I was chair, I did that.
I think I recall something like that.
Maybe, I think it was like the, once a month, I think it was a once a month.
And I don't mind doing it once a month. But I would like, I think it's good experience for all of us to be involved and it also takes sufficient ways, spreading our time commitment with the, with this commission.
I like the idea of a liaison rotation. I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
I'm open to that too, so.
So why don't I put together basically an agenda for the upcoming balance of the year? And we'll pass it around, see who's available, who's not, and we can work through that. We'll have backup in the event that somebody can't be there, that sort of thing. Very much like we do a MAC meeting.
Yeah.
It's basically what it is, so. We just rotate through it. Okay.
So I have a question. Do we have, because I can't remember, is this just a procedural thing, but because we agreed on it before, do we have to do a vote or anything? Or is this just amongst us and it's fine?
It's not agendas, so I think, you know, you guys are talking about, you know, you're just gonna do it informally. If you want me to bring it on the next agenda, I can do that.
Okay. I mean, I don't think it needs-
I think it's a rather informal agreement amongst ourselves.
Yeah, I wasn't sure, because we had agreed on it before and the other, I know the other commissions, there was something that came down.
It should be agendas, just like the MAC meeting is in our notes, just so we don't forget to do it.
Right, right. Oh, I see what-
We just can't take a vote on something that's not been agendas for the public.
Right.
Right, right. Okay, so, so we would like to have that in our future items or how we're gonna do, in our consent items, who's gonna be the next representative from the commission? Okay, and I think it's important that we establish this for ongoing, you know, planning commissioners in the future too, so there is a system set up, that's very clear. And I really like the rotation idea, just because it allows each and every one of us to be involved, rather than just hearing it from one individual, okay? All right, great. So this meeting's now officially adjourned.